Good evening, the City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session. The time is 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code Section 59453, subdivision Echo of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code 54950 at SEC, the Federal Americans with Disability Act. While this meeting is being physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via Zoom virtual platform, referred to the last page of the agenda for participating or participation information. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we can stand, one nation, united, all, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please continue standing.
Let us pray. Father Lord, we just thank you first of all for this great city of Riverbank. We thank you for every individual that calls Riverbank a home that God you would continue to provide and protect them. Lord, we lift up every one of our first responders, Lord. We're asking that you would protect them, God, and keep them safe as they make our city safe. And Lord, tonight, we want to thank you for Mayor O'Brien and this great council, God, as they navigate between what's required of the state of California and the concerns of the public here in Riverbank and their desires. I just pray for wisdom for them. And Lord, I pray that as a decision is made, that each one of us would continue to do our part in making the city of Riverbank a great place to live, unity. And Lord, I also want to ask for favor for every grant that's necessary for us to continue to make this a great city, that, Lord, timelines would be met and that favor would be given to us, Lord, as the city of Riverbank. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yuri Bay?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Here.
Agenda changes, there may be one agenda changes. We're waiting for the presentation information to come arrive. That's item 8.1. We'll do that as soon as practical. Could be after the consent calendar or after the first action item. Right now, conflict of interest is... Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Then we're going to move on to public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state laws, matter presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon other than any public comment.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jamie Agers. I reside at 7730 McHenry Avenue, Modesto. My husband and I moved out of the city of Modesto limit 35 years ago because we wanted to reside in the unincorporated area. We're very concerned about the proposed Riverwalk development that would annex the city from your existing boundary on Patterson Road all the way west to McHenry and all the way west to the north. We opposed a similar project by the Groupie Development Company in the same location back in about 2008, and we oppose this plan as well. As you're aware, Riverbank's sphere of influence was increased by 1,500 acres, which is quite large, just six years ago in 2016, the first 400 acres of this area, which is just beginning to develop as crossroads west. Given that, a request to add another 1,500 acres to your sphere of influence seems premature, if warranted at all. I urge you to deny this project without moving it forward to Lasco when it comes before you. Thank you.
Next, please. No other comments?
Good evening, my name is Dan Whitstone. I live on McHenry Avenue. My property overlooks the river bottom where the Riverwalk project is exposed. I'm in opposition to that project, just so many reasons. Last night, we had a coyote run across the back patio. The hawks were out today. That's the Met raccoons and the prime agricultural land. Traffic, I think somebody, I heard you guys talking about a traffic light got changed a little bit, but the other day, we were going back to Escalon, and it was backed all the way up the River Road, so... And then McHenry, you know, of course, it backs all the way up to Escalon as well, so... And Crossroads isn't even finished yet, so what happens when we add another 3,500 homes or so? Please look at this project with a critical eye. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bernard Agers. I live at 7730 McHenry. I'm next door to Dan. I overlook this river bottom land that sometimes floods. I've looked at this for 33 years. It is prime ag land. I don't see that as a great place to build a home. If one was built down there, I would not buy it. I would campaign against anyone wanting to buy a home in a flood zone. Doesn't make sense to me. And yet, developers will go ahead and do it and move on, and when it floods, who picks up the tab? Basically, I can sum it up in two words. To develop that area would be an environmental injustice to the whole area. Ponder that term. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Karen Camato. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. O'Brien, and council members.
Just curious, I'm not asking for an address. Where do you live?
On Hoag Road.
Hoag Road? Okay.
I'm here tonight to express my opposition to the proposed Riverwalk project. I'm opposed to building 24 to 100 to 3,000 homes, more or less, and other buildings and commercial buildings on exquisite productive river bottom farmland. And further, I would request again that moves these plans to your already approved areas of farm lesser soil. I'm opposed to building homes on a flood plain that will eventually, lives will be placed at risk. I'm opposed to accessing and depleting water resources, especially in terms of the aquifer, and reducing needed water recharge areas. I am opposed to Riverwalk building and next to the San Foss River where wildlife and riparian habitat would be negatively impacted. I'm opposed to the huge increase in vehicles and traffic, and therefore, the increased likelihood of gridlock and access. I'm opposed to the infrastructure needs that would accompany this proposal, need of stormwater, liquid and solid waste, water wells, roads, fire police, and ambulance services. Please consider this plan proposal carefully, and again, please oppose it when it comes across to your, on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Saying that, thank you. I'm just looking at the map where people have said I'm opposed because I have a house on a big lot. I've heard people tell me that this is prime agriculture land, but it has to be greater than 40 acres is a lot that it's not. And prime agriculture, of course, you say it's prime does not necessarily justify it as being prime. The state has a map that tells you where prime is and where prime is not. I would like those who are stating it's prime, please have a current updated map and see where the prime agriculture land is. Saying that, we do have our presenter, so we'll move on to 8.1, Government Code Claim Submitted by Schneider Electric Buildings, Inc.
Our deputy city attorney, Doug White, will be presenting this item.
How you doing, Mayor and council? So I wanted to talk to you a little bit about a tort claim that was filed against the city by Schneider Electric. Going to give you some background. That being said, I just want to start from the outset, saying that I have to be limited in what I am saying because we're in ongoing, we have an ongoing legal action involving millions of dollars with Schneider Electric, and so if I don't respond to some comments that are maybe made, that would be the reason why. It's not because I don't want to, it's because we're in formal legal proceedings as to how to handle those. With regard to the project, in mid-2012, Schneider Electric approached the city to propose, and again, they approached us, to propose the city do an energy audit to determine the city's eligibility for an energy savings contract, so something that would help us save money in the delivery and hopefully provide a better, greener process and project for residents at less money. For approximately six months, Schneider evaluated the city's wastewater treatment facility processes and requirements to service the city, including the city's waste discharge permit, and review of the discharge permit was necessary in order to establish the aereration needs of the system, which is kind of how much, to overly generalize, to kind of introduce oxygen into the system. Based on the audit, Schneider Electric proposed an upgrade to the city's wastewater treatment process, which proposal was approved by the city in October of 2013, with the improvements themselves costing approximately $4 million. From the time of installation of Schneider Electric's equipment to the present day, the new treatment system has never performed as promised and has resulted in a reduction in the city's capacity to service future development. So as opposed to creating cost savings, it actually, taken as a whole, created additional costs and burden on the city. The city has worked with Schneider Electric to resolve the performance issues caused by the installation of the new wastewater treatment process since its installation in 2013 to no avail, and yes, I'm really saying 2013, and I recognize that this is 2022, so kind of shows this council's commitment to trying to amicably work through these issues. But that has unfortunately been a no avail, and ultimately, the city was forced to pursue legal action against Schneider Electric, which is, as I prefaced, is one of the reasons my comments are going to be limited and very uncharacteristic for me. I also wrote them out, so... So regarding the claim that's going to, that's under consideration today and will be voted on in closed session, on January 31, 2022, Schneider Electric submitted a Government Claims Act, claim, what we kind of commonly refer to as a tort claim, to the city alleging the city owed Schneider in excess of 1.1 million for work associated with fixing the problems caused by the wastewater treatment system installation. So they wound up doing that, so that's an interesting approach. All post-installation work performed by Schneider where it's sub to contractors was due to the new treatment system failing to meet performance requirements specifically outlined in the product manual provided under contract with Schneider Electric. And Schneider's claim alleges that prior to and during installation of the new treatment system, Schneider requested the city remove sludge from the wastewater treatment facility treatment ponds, and the city refused to do so. This is frankly completely untrue. Prior to installation, Schneider subcontractors, which designed the new treatment process, measured the sludge in the ponds and determined that removal was not necessary. This initial assessment was proven to be accurate in 2021, when, after all other attempts to resolve the issue with the treatment process, it failed, and the city and Schneider worked together to have all the sludge removed from the treatment ponds. As the city expected, the sludge removal did not resolve anything, and the wastewater treatment facility continues to perform exactly as it did prior to the removal. Schneider further alleges in their claim that the city withheld material information regarding the operation of the wastewater treatment facility, specifically referring to the discharge permit violations by Pacific Gold specifically. It is public record that Pacific Gold discharge, that Pacific Gold discharge permit violation occurred well after the installation of the new treatment process and was swiftly dealt with by the city, and in fact, the city informed Schneider Electric of the discharge violation when it occurred. Further, Schneider also alleges that the city allowed raw sewage to be dumped directly into the treatment ponds. This is true and a necessary part of the city's treatment process. Whether the sewage comes to the basin for treatment through the piped collection system or through the vacuum trucks which help maintain and clean the sewage collection system, it all flows to the pond for treatment. That's what it's designed for. When Schneider's employees observed the vacuum dumping sewage in the treatment pond, the city's plant operator explained the necessary process the vacuum truck performs to that employee. So when somebody does something not in the way they're not supposed to, we tell them how it's supposed to be done, and we correct the problem immediately. And I would say that both before and after those events took place, it performed ironically the same, so... The city maintained the new treatment system pursuant to the requirements of the installed product manual and has diligently and in good faith worked with Schneider Electric to attempt to resolve the performance problems. Again, I think I started off by saying that the original proposal was in 2012, and we're now in 2022, so I think that evidences some patience and commitment. Pragmending has diligently and in good faith worked with Schneider Electric to attempt to resolve the performance problems. The problems identified during installation have continued since the full installation and have never, and have never been even partially resolved. All requests from Schneider to the city for data collected from the wastewater treatment facility were honored, with the most recent data provided in December of 2021. Schneider complains of the city removing its access to the computer which manages the wastewater treatment facility. The law requires a licensed plant operator to authorize all wastewater treatment facility process changes. Schneider Electric's remote access to wastewater treatment facility computer was removed after Schneider employees made a process change to the system without first consulting with the city's licensed plant operator. That's a no-no. You don't do that. Schneider was informed of their access cancellation and informed of other available ways in which they could monitor the performance of the system. So as I said before, I'm going to not ad lib a whole lot because of the fact that this is something that's under, you know, multimillion dollar litigation, or at least in the legal process. I would note that this cross complaint is just that. It was filed after we, fairly shortly after we had to take legal action. I think it's important, and it is the right of the public, to hear the processes that are going on, as well as, you know, the lengthy commitment the city has had to making sure that this product both works and that they, to the extent possible, work with Schneider Electric to achieve a positive result, and when the positive result was no longer achievable, patience does, I think, have a decade long expiration date on it. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can in public and then to allow you guys to take public comment. I would ask, and just for the public, I want to make sure that you know that I have, and we are counseling our city council members not to make significant public comments since they may be called as witnesses in any kind of litigation involved, so if they're not making comments, don't take that as them not caring. I can assure you that they do and have very animated discussions and conversations in closed session about this matter. They care very much, but they are, they have been counseled by us as their legal counsel since we're in litigation to avoid as much comments as they feel that they can. So with that, Mayor, happy to answer any questions or turn it open to the public.
I have no questions, just a comment that Schneider let it go this long, and that it's their reputation that they're putting out there on the line. Thank you. Any public comment? Thank you. All right, we'll move forward. Sir, thank you very much, and we'll wait for the closed session.
Yeah, so just real quick, so everybody knows what's going on, we're going to continue the discussion in closed session. Action, I expect, will, if there is any, will be announced coming out of that, but this was just informational leading in to the closed session.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar consisting of Item 9.1, wave readings. Item 9.2, approval of March 8, 2022, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes. Item 9.3, a resolution authorizing the city to implement teleconference public meeting pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, allowing the city to continue a hybrid virtual meeting environment. Item 9.4, a resolution providing the interim city manager or their designee signature authority for the submittal of an application for funding to the state water board, water and wastewater aridage COVID relief program. Item 9.5, a resolution authorizing the city, the interim city manager, to submit an emergency solutions grant, ESG, and California Emergency Solution Grant, CAESG, application for funding for homeless outreach and shelter services, and if awarded, execute an agreement with an amendment thereto with San Foss County. Do I have anyone wishing to pull any item or anyone wishing for consideration?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Yuri Bay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes. Motion passes 4-0. Item 10, 10.1, fourth public hearing redistricting process for Riverbank 4 council district boundaries. Tonight, this will also be provided interpretation in Spanish, and that, with that, we have our interpreter approaching the podium at this time. When we speak in English, let's make it short sentences, so it can be, so there won't be any backlog or miscommunication. You're a lawyer.
Counsel? This is our fourth and last required public hearing regarding redistricting, which is the process where we look at whether we need to adjust your district boundaries based on the tenure census. This is our fourth hearing, so I'll keep it short. The deviation from the largest to the smallest district is less than 10%. This allows you to keep the map as it currently is? That being the case, our recommendation is you adopt that map as your final map tonight. So again, just recommend you open it up for public comment. People can provide maps, any testimony they wish, as in the last three hearings. And again, our recommendation is to adopt the current map as presently situated.
Thank you. I open this up for a public hearing. Do I have anyone wishing to speak? Do I have anyone on Zoom wishing to speak?
No, we do not, sir.
All right, with no public comment, no public input, I close the public hearing. I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item 10.1 as stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item 10.1 for the fourth public hearing and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yuri Bay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Item 10.2, first reading by title only, an introduction of a proposed ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor. We have Kathleen Cleek, who is joining us via Zoom, who will be providing the staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and members of the council. I apologize, but my PowerPoint will not move.
We can see it here, and can we move it for her? Well, it looks like you're going to be talking without the PowerPoint.
Oh, I got it. Good evening again, Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, I'm bringing forward to you SB 1383. In 2016, a Senate Bill 1383 was signed into law to combat climate change and reduce landfill methane emissions. So one of the mandated requirements of this new SB 1383 law is for each city to pass an ordinance outlining the requirements of the new law. So one of the mandated requirements is a city that creates the enforceable mechanism, so that's why we're creating the ordinance, to allow enforcement of this mandated requirement, is to provide organic collection services to residents and businesses, establish edible recovery programs, procurement, monitor compliance, and conduct enforcement. So organic collection requirements, ordinance will require all commercial customers to subscribe to a recycling program. Commercial customers can qualify for a waiver if they meet any of the following criteria. So if they do not produce two yards of solid waste per week, if they do not produce 20 gallons of organic waste per week, if they meet space limitation requirements where that's an existing business and there's no area for them to put an extra bin, they can get an exemption at this time. If they self-haul organic recycling and complete SB 1383 compliance form describing their self-haul program, then they meet the waiver requirement. The hauler requirements under SB 1383, identifying the recycling facilities they will be hauling organic material to and provide a record of that facility to the city, transporting material to an approved organic waste facility, obtain city approval to haul construction and demolition material in accordance with the Cal Green recycling requirements, and franchise haulers will be required to comply with education, equipment, signage, container labeling, colors of different containers, contamination monitoring as described in the bill. Organic collection requirements, ordinance will require all residential customers to subscribe to the city's recycling program, and what we're planning to do with that is right now, we have two bins. The green waste yard bin will now be for... The green waste yard bin will now be for, as well as yard waste and cardboard, it'll also include their organic waste. The SB 1383 also requires an edible food recovery requirement. It establishes enforcement mechanism that requires organic food generators to develop and report food recovery agreements with food recovery organizations, report food recovery weight to help the city develop food recovery capacity diversion, allow city code enforcement or designees to monitor food recovery operations. Food recovery organizations will be required to keep records of agreements, keep records of their total weight, which will, the main, well, one of the big things with this ordinance is a lot of reporting, which is going to take a lot of time and, a lot of time and hours. Cal recycling requirements, so the ordinance will require all persons conducting activities covered CalGreen recycling to follow the requirements. All persons actively conducting construction and demolition work, all persons actively conducting work that requires compliance with the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, known as MEWOL. There's procurement requirements, so the ordinance will require the city to comply with the recovered organic waste product and paper procurement policies. Recovered organic waste procurement requirements include the city to procure 2,015 tons of recycled organic materials such as mulch or compost. We also need to comply with paper procurement requirements, which procure paper products that consist of at least 30% by fiber weight. Whenever those are available at the same or lesser cost, the city will need to purchase that. And I believe we are already doing that. Vendors are cert, to certify paper meets minimum recycling content by providing invoices and records stating paper solid is eligible to be labeled with an unqualified recyclable label. Provide records to the city's record-keeping designated. Inspection and investigations authority. The ordinance will create an enforcement mechanism and authorization for the city to inspect and investigate violations regarding SB 1383 requirements. City representative to conduct inspections and investigations at random of collection containers, collection vehicle loads, processing or disposal facilities for contamination. City represented to inspect and investigate commercial edible food generator haulers, food recovery services, and food recovery organizations for compliance with applicable laws. So the enforcement for this, they're giving us a two-year period, so there will be no violations until 2024. This is allowing a two-year education and outreach window for all residents before any issuance of any violations. The penalties, after that time, the first violation would be $100, second violation 200, third violation or any subsequent violations would be $500. So it's recommended that the council conduct the public hearing for the reading of the proposed ordinance tonight to consider its approval. If approval, if approved, the second reading of the ordinance by title only will be scheduled for the next regular city council meeting, which is April 12, 2022, for consideration and adoption. And I'm available for any questions, and I will try to answer them.
Kathleen, thank you very much. I appreciate the intensity of this project as we move forward. There's a couple of items that were mentioned by others before I opened this up. One was, the violation appears to be too high. Who sets the violation rate? And I, do we use this to help those who cannot pay their fees, the fixed incomes and other, with the fines?
Mayor, I'm not sure about what we could use the money for. I don't know if we would use it towards the cost of an enforcement officer. The penalties can be, the city council can change those dollar figures. Those were just dollar figures that were put in when we were reviewing and looking at the ordinance. We, you know, they're giving two, residents are given two years, you know, with the education and outreach. But please, as a council, Mayor, you're more than welcome to discuss and change any of those dollar figures at your will.
We don't intend on fining anyone before this is set fully in motion, correct?
That is correct.
In which we will begin our education and enforcement. And the fines would most likely go towards that enforcement effort and continuing the education to our residents.
Okay. But I have other questions, but I'll wait. I know other council members also do.
I have a comment to make.
Go ahead, Blackler.
I mentioned to our city manager some time ago that I still see a little confusion in what goes where. Example, we have a facility here that's taking plastic clear bags and recycling them. But by the guidelines, I should take that bag and show, throw it into the regular trash because it wasn't with food, per se, and so it doesn't go in the food container. But it doesn't go in the recyclable container either, because it won't go at the recyclable house. And so I'd like to see it cleaned up so that there isn't confusion with our public and that they know exactly where they should put the things that are there. And that may help it be better for them if it's that way. That's just one example. I've got a couple of others. But I think we need to clarify it so everybody knows where it's going. Thank you.
So, thank you for the presentation, Kathleen. So I think the educational aspect of this should definitely expand longer than the two years. We're going to have new development, new residents coming in and out. So I think the educational portion of this is going to probably be indefinite, in my opinion. The procurement of compost, that was kind of, I was kind of shocked actually about that. So we're required to purchase 2,015 tons of compost. That's going to be mandated. So, and I think it was the mayor who mentioned this. I think we should have a plan in place to resell that compost to, like, Riverbank Organics, maybe even have a small program for, like, residents and something like that. Just making sure we're kind of thinking ahead if this is the new mandate. That's all I got for now.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. I'll open this up for the public. Do we have any public comment? Do we have any on Zoom?
No, there's not, Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, there is.
Go ahead and speak.
This is Evelyn. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
I, I sent in my comments, and those maps, it shows how most of the huge areas of areas that are exempt from this whole thing. Only the small areas are white are going to be, have to pay for this and follow all these rules. I have one other question. All of these huge areas that, the blues, the greens, the reds that are exempt, that want to comply with this, the jiltin will still be picking up their garbage. What are they going to do with it? Are they going to have to comply and sort it and do what they do with ours in order to comply with the state? Or are they just going to dump it in a garbage thing somewhere? What happens to all that? That's going to be a huge amount that will not have to comply, will not be paying for this.
Do you have any other comment?
No, rest of them are, I put in writing, so I'll wait for answers on them.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right, saying none, I'll bring it back. The jiltin is required by law to reduce their organic waste in the landfill by 75%. If they're getting it from exempt areas, they will be processing it the same way. There is no difference in the processing. Only difference is in the fees, because of so far, people out there, very few individuals out there. For the comments made about what to do with the waste, food waste and compostable waste all go into one bin. Non-compostable will be going into another bin. That still will be sorted out by jiltin. The process is being developed now. It's already been engineered, they're now developing it, and should be up and running within a year. So hopefully, within that year, we should understand our, how our educational outreach has been effective. Okay, with that, this is the first reading, I believe.
Yes, it is the first reading, Mayor. And I do have a question regarding the enforcement. Did you want to change those violation amounts? And the reason I'm asking that is, part of this ordinance, it states that we need to, at some point, we do have to charge our residents.
I'm not in the habit of changing it right now. Let's see how, if there are very few violations, no problem. But if there's a repetitive, by a large majority or a large number, through confusion or whatever, then we may consider how we impose fines.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, for that clarification.
But that would be with the concurrence of the council. That's what I meant. Okay.
I knew, I knew that. And yes, I also wanted to state, council members, you had a questions and concerns about the procurement and also getting out to residents exactly how they can recycle and what they can and can't recycle. And just want to let you know that we are working on that, and we're also working on, with other jurisdictions together to cut costs so that we can share that material and information with all of our residents.
Thank you. All right, I brought it back to the city council for consideration for a second reading, if this is acceptable to the council.
You have my concurrence, so I'll make a motion to approve Item 10.2.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve 10.2, and a second for a second reading at a future date of 12 April 2022. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yuribey.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Item 11.1 on the new business, presentation and introduction to harm reduction.
I have Donna Kinney, our planning and building manager, who will be giving a brief introduction of our presenter tonight.
We'll let you make the mistakes.
I'm a building manager, and I have with me Diego Capistrón, who is a Stanislaus County Community Health Worker III. Before we get going, I'd just like to state for our audience that although I am bringing this before the council, this is not a city program, per se. This would be staffed by the county health agency, and it would be located at St. Francis Church as part of the services that they already provide, the social services that they provide.
So, one quick thing, it actually won't be staffed by Health Services Agency to the county, sorry. I shouldn't have mentioned that before. It's going to be staffed by volunteers with St. Francis of Rome. So basically, just to quickly summarize, the program is independent of the county, as I assume it's also independent of the city. It's a private program that's fully funded by the state, and it's going to directly fund St. Francis of Rome in the program. So it won't pass through the county, it won't pass it through the city. It's directly for St. Francis of Rome.
Thank you for that clarification. So what is harm reduction? It creates space to empower individuals to take a look at their lives, identify their priorities, what risks are they taking, and give them the tools to reduce the harm that's associated with these choices that they've made. How did harm reduction come about? It actually grew out of the HIV and AIDS epidemic in the 1980s, and there were several agencies that followed up with a syringe network, a harm reduction workshop group, working group, and then Harm Reduction Services were established in Sacramento in 1993. So this isn't a new program. There was a 2000 California law that allowed these syringe exchange programs. And then the California Budget Act of 2019 provided funding for these service programs. And in 2021, Governor Newsom signed AB 1344, which prevented these programs from being sued under CEQA. Why does this matter, this background? It's because harm reduction is all about addressing public health, public health concerns. That's what it grew out of, and that's what its focus is. There are principles of harm reduction. One is to accept for better or worse that drug use is part of our world, and we choose to minimize the health risks and the harmful effects rather than ignore or condemn them. We understand drug use as a multifaceted complex phenomenon that encompasses a continuum of behaviors, from severe use to total abstinence, and acknowledge that some ways of using drugs are clearly safer than others. It establishes equality of individual and community life and well-being. It may not necessarily mean that all drugs will be completely stopped, but there could be successful interventions and policies. It calls for nonjudgmental, noncoercive provision of services and resources to people. We're here to, they're here to assist them in reducing the harm associated with those choices. This ensures people who use drugs and have a history of drug use have a real voice in the programs that assist them and serve them. It affirms that people who use drugs themselves are the primary agents of reducing the harm, and it seeks to empower them to share information, support each other, and come up with strategies that meet their actual conditions of use. It recognizes the realities of poverty, class, racism, socialization, and other things like sex-based discrimination and social inequities that affect both people's vulnerability to and capacity for dealing with drug-related harm. And this does not attempt to minimize or ignore the real and tragic harm and danger that can be associated with illicit drug use. The harm reduction tools that this program will supply, Narcan, which reverses opioid overdose, syringes, safe injection equipment to keep people safe and healthy, and there are other survival supplies too, for wound care, face masks, and pads. The closest harm reduction right now, program is in Stockton. Riverbanks would be the first in the county. So there are two pathways to a harm reduction program. So there are two pathways to a harm reduction program with the state. Either an application is made directly to the state, which is kind of a long process, or if the program has an approval of the lo- local jurisdiction first, that process is a lot, uh, shorter. Um, what we're looking for tonight is direction. If the council, um, approves of this type of programming, program happening with Saint Francis of Rome, their process to get this going would be shorter and I would need either, um, to provide, uh, minutes where this discussion has happened or possibly an email from the mayor stating, uh, that the city would support it. Um, if you have any questions, um, I'd be happy to answer or I have, uh, our expert Diego right here, um, who could answer the questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. The, um, the program itself is not under the city, nor is it under the county. It's individual, so to be Saint Francis of Rome. Uh, they could go ahead and do it without our concurrent, but this is a program that, um, has nothing but positives for it. There's no negative, no downside, there's no management, there is no reporting on our part. So it is good to see that we are trying to reach out and help those individuals who, um, have fallen into some of the, um, the entrapments of our modern living. So I, uh, will ask the public, but I fully support any type of program that will, um, help lessen, uh, a lot of the addictions that are out there and in the long term, most likely help in our homeless situation.
Uh, thank you, Diego, for coming out here. Um, so I, I also see a lot of benefits to this. Um, the feminine hygiene, you know, those are considered survival needs for our homeless and you guys are going to be providing that. Uh, you did mention that the church staff volunteers are going to be staffing this. Do they get some kind of training to do this? Like to handle, like the syringes is going to be like, I think, you know, a concern and how, how is that going to be handled?
There is training involved, um, just one quick thing that I did want to mention. It's not necessarily church staff that's volunteering. It's people from the community that happen to go to Church of Saint Francis of Rome. So we actually already have a running list of volunteers that are able and willing to volunteer and that was a common question, actually. So there will be training for people that decide to volunteer for the program. And it can be, um, like a video, it can also be somebody that I can help, um, with training and from there they can continue, the program can continue training others that decides to join.
Awesome. If I can have staff pull up principle number eight. I just, I just want everybody to, I just want the public to, to be aware, like, we as council, we, we, we get it. We understand that, you know, doing drugs is bad, we get that. And the whole program is called harm reduction, right? We want them to live another day, right? They're going through bad times right now. Um, so yes, they're gonna, they're gonna find ways to harm themselves. So let's find a way to help them out, survive a day and let's get them back on their feet. So I'm, I'm in support of this.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I agree with everything said by council member, uh, Uribe and also the mayor, but I just want some quick clarification on a couple of things. One, it's, since it's a private organization, the funding will come from that organization per se?
So funding will come from California Department of Public Health and it'll be directed, um, directed, um, to Saint Francis of Rome, yeah.
And the other thing is, will we be serving people outside of that Riverbank? Will they be coming in, you know, say from Escalon or other places possibly? Are you, are you just going to, we all serve everybody that comes, right?
Well, it's a possibility. That somebody, I mean, somebody is able to just walk or drive down or take the bus from Escalon or a neighboring city, that's, um, fine. I don't imagine that Saint Francis of Rome would turn anybody away if they're willing to participate.
They wouldn't, I know as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, could you talk about the relationship that the city of Stockton has with their program?
So the city of Stockton, to my understanding, does not, thank you, does not have a direct relationship with their program. That one was actually, um, authorized through CDPH. They went through the process, um, of doing the application of, um, signing up with CDPH and it was completely independent of the city.
Hey, I'm fully supportive of that too.
Oh.
And I don't see Saint Francis of Rome being represented here. Um, I'm assuming we have gotten their permission?
Yes.
Okay, that's a biggie.
That's correct. We've had several meetings with them and I sent a copy of the staff report to Father, but I'm assuming he wasn't able to make it.
Okay.
And I assisted in their announcement to everybody that went to church, um, last weekend. Well, not, not this last weekend, the one before. And I was there for every announcement. There was people that had questions, I answered them and that's where we actually started getting the list of volunteers, so it went well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Uh, anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Or anyone out in Zoom land wants to comment? Can you star six, please? All right, you're unmuted.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple of questions on it. Um, is this maybe like a twenty-four hour, uh, in and out? Possibly running the people coming in and out for this program? Is it a twenty-four hour program? Um, I'm also wondering how they handle the dirty needles? Do they have to bring them back to get more? Or do they just, they just discard the dirty ones and come back for more? How does that work?
Okay, so-
Also, I just, uh, Sarah, the police department had any input on this?
Repeat that last section.
I'm wondering if, if, if our, uh, police chief has had any input on this? It seems like once word gets out that they're doing this project and we're the only one for a long ways, for all around, that you could probably expect to have a lot of people coming in to use the program for, for, for the free needles and such. I just wondered if the police chief had any, has had any info on this?
The chief is here right now and he has no comment on it. The, uh, the program itself, uh, could be as determined by Saint Francis of Rome, uh, if it's, uh, uh, operational or if it's a twenty-four hour, uh, service. I would, uh, venture to say they would not have a twenty-four hour service, at least not initially because of the staffing situation and also the, uh, uh, availability of information for this program.
So to help answer the question of availability, I know that it's going to be once a month. The exact date and the exact, um, like, business hours of the program? Or it's still to be determined?
Did you hear that, Evelyn? Okay, just to repeat it, it's going to be starting off at once a month. The date to be determined and, uh, they'll go, they'll assess it and then go on from there. Thank you.
And to answer the question about the, the dirty syringes, um, the, the whole idea behind the program too is to help with, like, any litter that might be around in the city. So this is a perfect opportunity to get funding to have a space for people to come drop off their used syringes or, say for example, if somebody's also diabetic or maybe they take vitamin B and they inject it, they're also welcome to come drop off, um, any dirty syringes that they might have since we can't throw them away in the garbage, this is the perfect opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. I believe you have concurrent. I believe that we can either supply the minutes or I can supply an email if you give me the appropriate address and individual who needs to get, receive the information.
Perfect, thank you.
And I think we should also, uh, advise, um, our, uh, representative on the board of supervisors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item eleven point two. A resolution adopting the twenty twenty-one general plan and housing element annual progress report APRSs.
We have Gabriel Salazar, our associate planner, who will be presenting this item.
Good evening. Good evening, um, city council and mayor. Yes, this item is the twenty twenty-one annual general plan and housing element report. This is a report, um, that's, uh, completed and provided to the state every year by April first.
Can you speak through your report?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So yes, basically this information, um, is provided to the state on an annual basis. It's used to highlight three areas. The progress the city has made on the regional housing need allocation, which was developed for the timeframe twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. It's also used, um, to provide information on progress on the general plan and housing element programs and also to ensure grant fu- funding. This council approved report is submitted to the California Office of Planning and Research and also the Califor- California Department of Housing and Community Development. To highlight some of the grants the city has obtained, um, in the la- in the last year plus, um, the Community Development Block Grant is a fund that local community development activities are conducted with, such as affordable housing programs, anti-poverty programs and infrastructure development. SB Grant, which was a grant that the city won, um, four hundred sixty thousand dollars in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, and that money was used in twenty twenty-one to execute a contract with JV Anderson to update the city's accessory dwelling unit, um, zoning section and municipal code. Also with this information the city presents to the state, uh, the city was also able to win a local early action planning grant in twenty twenty as well. In twenty twenty-one, the city made more progress on that, um, grant in terms of, um, obtaining, um, a permanent processing software system.
Not the quicker, it's the operator.
No problem. Anyhow, um, continuing, yes, and like I mentioned, yes, we worked, um, city staff is working with, I worked to develop a new permanent processing software that we're fortunate to receive through a hundred fifty dollar, hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, um, through partnership with, um, Mari Selah and Donna in our office. And then additionally, we were also able to receive an award for a regional early actu- early action planning grant, which was for eighteen thousand dollars approximately and that was used to fund, um, a civic spark fellow that's helping out with the city in the environmental justice outreach for the general plan update, um, in the next year or so. Some progress report highlights. Thank you, Donna. Um, we have reached, uh, ten percent of the very low income goal, eighteen percent of the low income goal, zero percent of the moderate income goal, thirty-six percent of the above moderate income goal. In twenty twenty-one, forty-seven, um, housing building permits were approved. Um, twenty-six of these were for Countryside One, sixteen, sorry, twenty-eight for Countryside One, sixteen for Crossroads West Unit One. Um, there was also a duplex, which was for two units and an accessory dwelling unit structure that was also permitted in twenty twenty-one. Um, along with that, we also anticipate, uh, more building permits this year. Um, as also in twenty twenty-one, um, the city approved the Heritage Collection, which was a subdivision for forty-seven units. Um, the planning commission also approved a tentative map for eighteen units for Riverbank Enclave. And then there was also Countryside Three, which was for twenty-two units that was also approved, um, by the city council as well. And then there was also the Herring, Herring Feld, um, project, uh, which is part of the Crossroads, Crossroads West and that was a tentative map for two hundred ninety-eight units. Some progress report highlights, um, in terms of consistency and progress made, um, consistent with the general plan is section program lines five, which is zoning amendments. Like I mentioned earlier, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance was developed and created and approved by the city council in December twenty twenty-one. There was also, um, some progress made on the circulation, um, element and that was for the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, which was, um, adopted also in twenty twenty-one. And then another consistency and highlight, um, with the general plan is design section three of the general plan, which, um, which for that meant that the, that the city established design standards and parking requirements for ADU. Um, the city is working with Stanislaus County, um, Stanislaus County Association of Governments and planning departments to develop, um, templates for ADU, um, structures so that homeowners are able to come in and, and have, uh, set plans that they want to, um, apply for, um, for building permits. And that concludes staff's, um, presentation. I'm here to answer any questions. There are any?
Uh, yes, thank you for the report. Um, in land use, uh, we have one being developed for the, um, uh, North County Corridor, which is now shifting in priorities by the state. So when we do our next general pla- or, or housing element, we have to shift it from, um, transportation of goods and services because they're taking away money for roads and putting it into bike and ped. Um, and that's, right now, is true. There, there, uh, uh, high, what is it? State Route one thirty-two is in jeopardy. North County Corridor is in jeopardy. The widening of ninety-nine is in jeopardy because these are just roads being improved and they're in jeopardy by those, and I'll say that quite clearly, who already have their roads developed, those on the coast and, and in the south. They're saying now we have to concentrate on, um, pedestrians and bicycle paths, so we can't build any more roads. So we're being left to fend for whatever we do. So when we do these housing elements, we do any more of these roads, we have to take into consideration our, uh, how, how it, um, develops well with our, um, bike and pedestrian master plan. And that, uh, we can do quite easily. We can show the state that we're doing that. At the same time, the state is going after self-help. Um, counties, uh, if they have to spend their money, not on streets and roads, but on bicycle and pedestrian lanes. So that, as we're doing that. Um, there was one portion in there about the parking downtown is no problem. Therefore, we didn't analyze it. We're probably going to have to analyze it after tonight. Um, how do we account for home-based businesses? There's been a lot this year, uh, through the pandemic and we did not analyze that either. So I think that as we move forward, we can only analyze it if they apply for a business license, I believe. So if they do not apply for a business license and they're, how do we capture those, um, operating outside of their own homes without that? Those are items that we have to really start capturing as we, uh, submit because our next general plan update, uh, technical review should be happening in the next couple of years. And we have to address those as well as environmental and social justice. And we, we did, uh, analyze that in this program, but not specifically, which we're going to have to do in the future. My, just based on dealing with the other COGS and other MPOs as well as our state leaders.
Thank you, Gabriel. So no questions, just a couple of comments. So on the arena cycle numbers, I was a little bummed out that we, the Ward Villas, the twenty eight affordable units wasn't represented in that, so hoping for the next cycle on that one. In the circulation element in our staff report here, it is, it does mention the, to develop a travel demand management ordinance. So that requires large employers to provide incentives for employees to commute via transit, bicycle, foot, or by carpool rather than single occupancy vehicles. I think that's something as we're developing, I think that's something we should probably consider now versus kind of just waiting, pushing it down the road. For the economic development element, so we're starting to see in some other, see, I'm not saying this is what we should do, I'm just saying it's happening in other cities. You know, gas stations are starting to be banned, right, because the goal is by twenty thirty five to be all electric and stuff like that. So maybe implementing some type of good faith effort to install electric charging stations, like twenty five percent, right, not outright banning gas stations, we still need those. It's going to be a slow transition, but just something to think about for, for both the elements. Thanks.
On the charging stations, I agree that we should be, and there is a master plan for that that's going through the process right now by council member. So that should be coming to us, and we should be looking at where they are, but that doesn't preclude us as a city to look at additional charging. The state and other responsible individuals are looking at raising the cost of driving for a gas vehicle to two dollars and eighty five cents a mile. So you're, it's going to be untenable. So as we emphasize how we're building out, we should emphasize where we are, and we're trying to create jobs for the, in the city, for the city. And we, the large employers at Santa Clara and others, they're the ones that are going to have to start paying their own fair share to get their employees either there or working from here, which they're reluctant to do right now. But that was just, not to bicker with you or, just, just to give you what is going on.
I appreciate that, Phil.
Just a quick comment, since you're talking about the transportation. I know that we're leasing out eventually to the organization for our trucks and pickups and whatnot, and are we going to have to eventually make those be electric also?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any public comment? I bring it back to the council for consideration of a resolution approving the twenty twenty one general plan and housing element annual progress report.
I make motion that we accept eleven point two as so stated.
And a second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on eleven point two. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Uri Bay.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes. Motion passes forty zero. Item eleven point three.
Thank you.
Thank you. A resolution to rescind resolution twenty twenty one dash one zero four to declare APN one three two dash zero one two dash zero two four located at the northeast corner of Third Street and Stanislaw Street as exempt surplus land under Surplus Land Act and three, approve the sale of said property to the Stanislaw Regional Housing Authority pursuant to a purchase and sell agreement.
Mayor and city council, the property in question is located at the northeast corner of Third and Stanislaw and is currently being used for parking. Back on October twenty sixth, this item was brought forward to the city council, and at that point in time, the process that was being followed was to declare the property as surplus and then go through a sixty day notification process that the property was available for sale. In discussions with legal counsel and in seeing that the contract that we would be entering, enter, under for the sale of the property would be with our local housing authority, it was decided that we would be able to apply through the exempt surplus land process, which would not require that public notification and sixty day window. So tonight's action does ask you to rescind that original resolution, and the discussion tonight would be whether you would want to declare that as exempt surplus land, and then second, allow for the sale of the property to the Stanislaw Regional Housing Authority. The housing authority has already been in discussions with our planning department regarding the construction of a senior center for their residents that are located both off of Stanislaw Street and off of Santa Fe where they have senior homes located. I'm available for any questions. There is still a process that we will, we will need to follow with the Department of Housing and Community Development in order to ensure that the land is properly deemed exempt, and then we can proceed with the sale.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this eleven point three, the eventual sale of surplus land to the housing authority?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom.
Very good. I bring it back to the council for consideration.
Well, I make a motion to approve item eleven point three, one to rescind a resolution twenty twenty one dash one oh four, second, declaring northeast corner Third Street and Stanislaw as exempt surplus land, and three, approving the sale.
And a second.
We have a motion to approve eleven point one and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uri Bay.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes. Motion passes forty zero. Thank you all. We'll go to twelve one, staff comments.
Just a couple of comments tonight. First of all, a thank you, a thank you to Gabriel Salazar for his service to the city. Gabriel, unfortunately, will be leaving us at the end of this month, so we thank him for all of his hard work and dedication to our planning department, and you will be definitely missed here at the city. And just a few others.
I just wanted, where is he going? He's not going to Lincoln, is he?
No, he's not. He's going very far south, Mayor. So second, so the state, the city, as you noticed in tonight's consent calendar, we requested authority to be able to submit for a state program that would allow us to have funding available for those residents who have had difficulties in making their utility bill payments. We were successfully awarded a grant last year that would be able to apply funds towards the water portion. The amounts that were approved for tonight are for the wastewater portion of those. But we did receive approximately eighty thousand dollars in funding for the water portion of the billings, and so those are going to be applied to residents' bills for the April billing that will be going out and processed. And so residents will begin to see that. They'll also receive a notification through the mail that they will have had that credit applied to their billing. And then we are also looking to sign up for the low-income household water assistance program that will allow qualified residents to get continued assistance with their utility bills for an extended period of time. So if there's any questions on that, our finance department has information, our assistant finance director, Tammy Alcántara, can provide more information to our residents.
Okay, thank you. All right, councilmember Hernandez.
This, last week, I participated in a grant review panel for the county and was able to learn more about the details of some nonprofits that are servicing Riverbank and beyond. There's a really informational process and hoping to still bridge those relationships with other nonprofits to, to support the ongoing programs that, that we have here, the creative programs we have here. And it was great to see everybody during the state of the city address, and it was really great to see during my first year, all the work that the council has done, so I'm pretty proud of everybody here and the staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Uri Bay.
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, I had an opportunity to tour the DA office. I got to meet with the current DA, Virgil Flatiger, and our new incoming DA, Jeff Leguero, spoke about DA's role in criminal justice, the propositions that are changing the criminal justice. Just today, Prop forty seven, efforts to lower the felony theft threshold from the nine fifty to the four hundred dollars failed in the first committee. So this is just an ongoing thing that's going on. We discussed programs to reduce recidivism, however you say that word. Close, right? And one of the programs he mentioned was their collaboration with one organization in Medesvo called Family Justice Center. So I got an opportunity to tour that one yesterday with Lisa Montaro, just the work they're doing there. They're helping with domestic violence, child abuse, legal matters, there's five lawyers on staff there. They're helping families in the county regardless of your immigration status. It's a safe space there, and it's just incredible work that they're doing there. Today, I also got a brief chance to, to chat with our new outreach and engagement leader, Dina Fernandez. So she's, Dina is here. I don't know if Dina would like to speak.
Come on up, Dina. I haven't met you yet.
To do outreach, with, working with the homeless. So I'm really excited about that, and I've already just hit the pavement a couple times, and I found it, they're not that easy to find. I kind of knew where they were, but I'll, I'll get to them. And we do have an event this Wednesday, the thirtieth, from one to four PM at the community park where the pool is. Turning Point will be there to help them get any documents they need, like birth certificates, their driver, not drivers, like, like ID or whatever is needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dina. That's all I have, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I met today with the city of Oakdale manager, and you asked me to see if we can start getting the lower Stanislaw County Committee going, and he's on board. He's going to take it to his council and see if they get their approval. I've got, I'm waiting for Rippon to contact me. I've sent them a notice to their mayor, and I have also found out who's working in Knights Ferry that I can contact, and I've contacted that person, and I'm hoping that they'll respond back to me in the next few days, and then I will talk with them about it. So we are proceeding ahead. Also, I went to church for the first time in two years because my wife said it's time. She's the only one that's been stoppin' us. Anyway, at, well, we watched it on the Zoom, you know. Anyway, I met, they had at the end of the mass, someone to talk to us about environmental justice program, and that rang a bell because we are doing something with, with the council. So they're forming a committee, and I went up and told them that I'd be glad to join it, to help out there, and that if he wants to coordinate with what we're doing, we're available.
Thank you very much. I'd like to have an update on the Sierra House, where we are. Can we do some day use out there, some, you know, have some type of a covering awning, do outreach ourselves there? That would be good to have. I know eventually we'll have a barbecue out there, but, and also a temporary building for showers, other items. I'd like to start doing what we can here for the city while we're waiting for the county to do other items. But I'd like to have that spoken about at our next city council meeting so we can have a participatory conversation. I do want to thank Yevre Hernandez, Norma Manrique, and then you too, Maricela, for the state of the city. You guys did a phenomenal job, made my job a lot easier, and I appreciate it. Norma, your graphics were great, and the YouTube, you guys should watch that, I'm not on it, just my voice, but that's good. I can now be called a voice artist. And then I know we're going to do the general plan technical review. I'd like to see if we can have some type of timeline so we can track that, to get that going, because I believe, I don't know if we put out an RFP, I know we're going to, I'd just like to have a little bit of clarity on that as we proceed on the north side of the city and also along the North County Corridor. With that, we'll go to closed session. Consisting of item thirteen point one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine. Name of the case, City of Riverbank versus Snyder Electric Buildings America, Inc. Item thirteen point two, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. Agency representative interim city manager, Metacilla Garcia. Employee organizations, Riverbank Miscellaneous Employees. Item thirteen point three, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Property, Jackson Avenue, Riverbank, APN zero seven five dash zero zero five dash zero two five and APN zero seven five dash zero zero five dash one zero one three. Agency negotiator interim city manager, Maricela H. Garcia. Property negotiator, John R. and Solki H. Gonzalez, under negotiation price, term of payment or both. Item thirteen point four, public employee appointment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven, Bravo one. Position, title, city manager. Before we go into closed session, anyone from the public wishing to pull any of those items and speak on, do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, you do not, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will convene to closed session. We will convene to closed session.
The City of Riverbank Local Redevelopment Authority Board reconvenes from closed session. Item 14.1, report from closed session on item 13.1, conference with legal counsel existing litigation. The City of Riverbank rejects the Snyder Electric Buildings case on the Government Code 54956.9. Item 14.2, report from closed session on item 13.2, conference with labor negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. Item 14.3, report from closed session on item 13.3. Item 14.3, report from closed session on item 13.3, conference with real property negotiators, direction has been provided to staff. Item 14.4, report from closed session on item 13.4, public employee appointment, direction has been provided to staff. Next city council meeting will be held on April 12, 2022 at this building. This meeting is now adjourned.